...head meeting for the 2022 budget to order. If everyone please rise and join me in the presence of these. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, well, thanks for coming, everyone. We've put an extraordinary amount of work into the budget this year. I appreciate everyone's time. I appreciate the council working hard, coming up with some good ideas and pushing this forward. So at this time, Beth, do you have any thoughts on what the best order would be?
I think we should just read your book and go through the order. I would like to say that the extension office I know sent you and you now about thanking you for the raises. Carol Manner called me and asked me to thank you for the raises for the girls. And Mommy shocked, they said thank you.
Maybe it'd just be easier, given where how everybody's seated today, to just go front and back is probably not. So we'll just try to take this the row at a time. If anybody in the front row would like to start, have input. And you're not obligated to do so, but if you'd like to.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I had one concern after reviewing the budget. Our office manager had gotten a raise back in March of $1, but the 7% increase was based on her old way, not her new way. So I was requesting that move that over to base the raise on a new raise post the old way.
Is there any questions other than that for Ken? Or does anybody have any? Would you like to say?
I assume you sure I am.
I'm just going to just take all of these and then we'll discuss them.
Okay.
Thanks, Ken. Anybody else from the front row? I mean, that's not how we've done it in years gone by. We take all the requests and then handle it. But.
We probably must go to work. I mean, does that make sense?
I agree.
Well, I mean, we have an hour. If we just discuss this over that and don't get it to somebody, that would be my biggest concern. And pay issues have drug on the path of our debate, so. There's a lot of things I didn't think particularly long that have taken longer, so.
Then we have a kind of consensus that we do want to just go and talk about it?
I think you give us enough in the minute for you to.
I'm completely indifferent. This is going to, this explanation is probably going to carry over multiple departments. So to hold it till later at one time makes sense to me. I also understand if you just want to go one by one. I agree that I don't want to have a conversation with Ken that keeps us from having a conversation with Cameron for 45 minutes. So.
The other thing, if Cameron hears what we supposedly can, then he might just say, well, that's what they're going to say to me. True, you know what I'm saying?
I see that all because we treated all of the departments in mid-year raises exactly the same. And I think we, you know, kill six or seven or eight birds once.
Okay.
I agree.
Then just as a point of clarity, I think we need a motion on the floor. If the change is requested, it would take a motion by this body to open debate. That we're not going to just sit here and debate something where there's no motion.
Well, can I just read from the minute what Beth's decided and then see what? We might not, they don't know this.
They don't know the information. This is what I said. When they come in front of us, they don't know what we've discussed and they don't know how we came to our decision. This is what I tried to express before.
Unless the council member went to them. I know a lot of council members did talk to their departments because they talked to me afterward. I'd like to just read this if you don't care.
Please.
October 6th, the mid-year raises were discussed and are re-discussed. I should have been on here.
This was a special session.
Right. Scott Ayers explained that the court employees and other employees who received a mid-year should be weighted average, should be a weighted average raise in the amount of 5.5 rates. It was decided to leave as established, three to four, wanting to leave it as established. And what that was is that they, the raise that was given in mid-year was not in the scenario of giving the 7%. They did the 7% on what you made at the beginning of the year.
That's for anybody that had a.
The reason behind that is if we'd have gave them a raise in mid-year and then gave them another raise, that is huge. And we just did not feel it was fair to all employees, to some of them to get all the 12% raise.
So basically, we went 7% across the board. And that's what we've got stated.
From January 1, 2020.
So otherwise, it was not a mistake. It was, we decided her pay raise will be 7% on her 21 January.
Is there anybody who'd like to make any motion on this? Non-action would be that everything stays the same.
On the budget, anything changed on the budget?
No motion would mean that our previous decision would just be what's ratified.
Non-action.
Excuse me.
I'm not understanding the motion. Are we supposed to motion and vote?
There was a force change, Tracy.
If anybody wants a change, they would have to make a motion to make a change. Otherwise, it will just stay as we've ratified, as we passed it and then to be ratified later. So no favor for change. All right.
Good morning.
Thank you.
I would also like to thank you all for your time and work and effort on the big budget. I have no concerns about my budget. I do appreciate the generous raises. I also recognize the additional funds put towards the first deputy. And I know that would be intentional because of concerns about first deputy, the small difference in the first and second. And my first deputy did his best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Second row.
Again, I'll acknowledge everybody else so far. Thanks for your work and effort on the budget. My only concern was with my conference and training line. It was $500 and you guys reduced it down to $250, probably because you didn't see a complete expenditure of that every year. Normally, our conference doesn't go until the last quarter of every year. This year, it's going to be next week, so I'll be at a conference next week. The total association fee and the conference fee came to $350 this year. And with the $250, I'm going to have to transfer some funds. And so, I mean, that's not a big deal, but I was just kind of shy to see that. Normally, my conferences won't go until the end of the year. So that was my.
Does it, you don't think you'll be able to browse and transfer $100?
$100, $150, I don't think so. I can't find it. So. Thanks, Ken. I will kind of co-tail with that. Some of those things, we appreciate that in knowing that they may not come to the full quarter. We may or may not be aware of those things and we appreciate you having the challenge because we look at it next year, we could do those things in the consideration and make it a little cleaner. It's just like the signar inspections that we do every year. It's the fourth quarter and that remain the same. But I think that one, I definitely explained in my, when I submitted it, that that is a fourth quarter inspection.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Mine's short and sweet. Just wanted to thank you guys, our staff does, and I do. We appreciate your raises. They're well overdue and we appreciate it. We're all happy about it. So as far as my budget goes, I don't have anything. Just thank you guys for your support and support of our service. And thank you.
I too will echo what's already been said. Thank you for the 7%, particularly for us. I have a difficult time filling jail officers' positions. Right now, we're one down out of seven. But I'm hoping with the 7% beginning to the new year, that that will entice individuals to come onboard our team. The other plus, I guess I'm hopeful of is that since benefits aren't being afforded at this federal level, that that may entice individuals to apply to jobs more so as we go along. So again, on behalf of our staff and I, thank you for what you did. If I may bring up, however, there is one topic related to the budget that I wanted to discuss. I guess it's along the lines for me of some confusion or I guess clarification I want to gain, and that is the legal deputy's position I had asked for $4,000 as it relates to that position for 2022. And I see that that was not funded. I did some, I guess to offer a little bit of background history on that for what, for your own information. If you recall, back this summer, when I had presented to this group the semi-annual commissary account fund, I'd explained that part of that funding that had gone out was paid through commissary. And again, the reasoning behind that is, is that payment of that individual through commissary is anytime there is an attorney representing a sheriff that has law partners who represent criminal defendants in other cases. There is state statute that says that in essence, that position for a sheriff for a legal deputy has to be funded through commissary and cannot be taken out of general fund. Fast forward to currently, my most recent attorney had retired at the end of last year. Of course, I was beyond 21 budgeting thoughts. Fast forward to earlier this spring, or actually the beginning of the year, I should say, I hired an attorney that was actually just a single individual within his law office and had to have law partners. And so it certainly is not there in relation to this law partner or criminal defendant. So it suggested to me this summer that I asked for the 22 budget for this $4,000 retainer fee in the, through the general fund. If you go back in history and Beth can attest to this, in past sheriffs, the legal deputy for the sheriff has been funded through county general. I know the sheriff Burns, at the time, his attorney at the time was paid for through county general. So really, other than, yeah, I guess I'll add too. I did follow up with state board accounts and saw their direction as far as this topic. I was informed, even though a sheriff has a number of funds available to us, each fund has a specific purpose. And the example, one of the examples I'll give is that we obviously have a firearms trading fund. In the past, monies that we gained from the sale of handgun permits went into that fund and could be applied for new firearms, ammunition, and then any firearms-related training. And so I brought that specific fund up to the state board of council that I spoke to, had to be Gloria Rogers, who's a longtime my employee of SBOA. And she advised that they would take exception that if I were to pay for my attorney out of that particular fund, SBOA would take exception to that. So I guess what I'm asking is formal reconsideration of this particular line item and funding for it through county general and that it be looked at again, please.
Anything else for you two?
That's it, sir.
Any action please?
Yes.
Off to something. Commissary.
We still remain roughly at the amount that I had last reported, around the $19,000 to $20,000 range, so.
Don't we have a commercial for doing the co-pendant support?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. That is going fantastic. Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, that, I wish I had done that sooner, to be honest with you. So, yeah.
I made a smile. Dylan's got it really well.
Nope, no more headaches as far as that department. It very well, Doc. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any action from the?
Regarding that, I wondered if Toby could do an additional beginning of the year. And I feel I would support that additional.
Have you discussed what he would pay out of firearms?
As a commissary, not commissary. He can't do it out of firearms.
Oh, so, okay. Out of commissary.
Commissary or general fund. There were two on state board of council for me that were eligible for that.
All right. Yeah, it was paid out of commissary last year because of the conflict with his ability or his.
The attorney.
Associates defending.
Right.
And even at one point, it was taken out of county general. And that no longer exists. So I.
Can it be paid out of that, Toby?
Out of.
Commissary.
Yes, it can be. Well, it has been for the last couple of years with my previous attorney.
Okay.
And so, I mean, I can, it's just that it's a pretty sizable debt. I know I had received an email from one of the members of the council with concern of the lower revenue at the mid-year mark this year. And so, of course, I brought up that not only payment of an attorney, but other costs that have been involved with commissary account were factors in our lower revenue stream.
And lower populations.
Right.
You also referenced it there.
Right, correct.
When is the last time you had, have a?
I'd say within the last couple of weeks, but it's been mainly minor concentration.
So is that for you?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah. There is state statute that allows for a sheriff to have a legal deputy.
I have one question on that. Are they deputized?
It varies from sheriff to sheriff. I do not. The individual I currently have is, he actually represents several Northwest Indiana sheriffs. So I choose not to.
I'm just curious what, where that, the origin of the name.
That's even before my time, Josh.
Yeah, well, I mean, there's some old-timey things in there, so. Yeah, thank you.
Beth, is there a way of, is there money, something that you can use that? Or I think he's going to have any money.
Does he have any?
I.
He doesn't have any money. Exactly. He paid it out of commissary, so there's not anything there to him.
I would make a motion that be fun, that be the line item in about $1,000.
Is there a second?
Out of the general fund?
Out of the general fund, correct.
All right, well, that motion, that's for a second. Is there any other motion for the sheriff's office?
No, I'll say that one.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we have a motion in a second to fund, and I assume then be fund commissary?
Well, you don't, you have anything at this commissary. This commissary fund is just, it's based behind.
We don't appropriate, oh, I have one there. So to fund a line for the legal deputy in the amount of $4,000?
Correct.
So we have a motion by Scott Ayers, suggested by Dr. Stoffer. Is there any discussion on the motion?
So this creates quite a bit of work to change the budget, right? If we do it this way.
With adoption being of the general, yes.
So that's why I'm not for it. I mean, we're going to.
There's no way on your decision. I mean, we can, we can have the right figures, we just won't have the right.
We're going to fund that, I mean, eventually, so. So I don't see changing on tables here for this.
I mean, there's kind of this flow of cash flow. Commissary has, the cash balances will probably decrease. Well, I know they have decreased, but I don't think it's in danger of not having money in the next year if this was funded out of that one. So, I mean, it could be, you know, if we wanted to debate it next year and define, there are a number of mechanisms. I, keeping the budget clean, you know, this close to the thing for a $4,000 change is possible, that's.
Can we raise this amount of budget?
Yeah. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to fund the legal deputy line to $4,000, say aye.
Aye.
Posed, aye. Aye. Motion fails for two, two for two. Is there any other motion for sheriff's office?
I'm not on my show, so I think you like everybody else said for the raise and for what you guys have done for us. The only question I had was my deputy pay. I did not get the increase there, so I wasn't sure if my deputies would be denied the increase. I have absolute privilege.
And I can answer that real quick. We only gave raises to full-time employees. Like, we only gave the 7% for employees. We did do, there was a myriad of things at our time that changed here. Full-time employees, that was the, the criteria for the 7%. Is there any motion on the courthouse office? All right, back row, anybody can just give this off here?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll take it back off with the other department head. Thank you for the 7% for the employees. Certainly appreciated. And I think you all know what the next schedule will be. I'm going to make another attempt to get the salary adjusted for my office assistant. I understand it was discussed at the last meeting. I just got a couple of questions to start with. One, did each of you want to be able to job description I gave you back in June when I went through all the work that this council told me step by step to do? So if you did and you've seen the differences in what all's involved with a full-time employee, my question is, how does that not warrant my staff getting to the same starting salary as other offices within the courthouse? I hear it's because it's the courts. I hear it because they're not a deputy position. But to me, it should be each job description. And that's something that I've actually had a couple of conversations with all of you guys or a few of you, and you've agreed, so. And then the second question I have is, when was the last time where your plan had a tax rate?
I think I answered that to you. In the last two years, you have not, but you will be giving one this year.
So it's 18?
20 and 21, you did not. And I don't, I didn't go any further back from that. But I think it started in 2020. Is that correct, Jeff?
It either started in 1908 or 20.
Jamie Ruff was still on the council when the rate was taken here.
It went back and forth, I believe.
So. Yeah, so I guess my big question is.
What's your, I mean.
I'm asking that Gloria's salary be, and again, we thank you for the 7%. That's a great start to what we're trying to get at and we appreciate it. But we're trying to get our office to where the other offices are. There's a posting downstairs that starts at 1666 and the job qualifications are high school diploma, meet minimum job standards for the job. And it's the same requirements that my office has. Yeah, my office is going to start out at 15 something. So I guess my question to you guys is, what's the difference with my or our office, area plan and my staff, that other offices that have the same job requirement start out at 1666? And we can't, for some reason, get past that hurdle of what our office is trying to get means. I guess, I don't understand why it's not, why it's not, in your guys' eyes, it's not. It's more fee for our office, but it is for everybody else in the courthouse. Is it?
I want to clarify, what's the relevance of the tax rate question?
Because we fund our own office. Everything that comes into our office the last two or three years has been our funds through permits, rezones, variances. That money is the money that has been through area plan.
I just want to clarify that those fees don't fund your office. The reason that there was no cash rate is because there was excess funds in there.
Correct.
And so that, the reason that the rate went zero is to burn that cash down because the amount of money in your fund exceeded your annual budget. And we exempt most of the fund, 50% of the amount of the budget. We want 50% cash in the line. So that, so the rate and pay really, there's no correlation between.
So when it gets to a certain number, you guys want to not get it higher and you back it off? Yeah.
The cash rate.
Correct.
The cash in the account, right? And that came from a multitude of reasons. I think the rate was too high to begin with. And then we had directors not in the position in that.
Sure. And I understand that. But what I was getting at is, we assume that we can bring in funds and support our own office. And I think this year, we've, we're already, right now in October, what we made the entire last year and we're continuing to every single day get permits. So my point is, is we're doing, Gloria does a great job in our office every single day. That office is not that office without her. She's dedicated. She's the best employee I've ever been a manager on her, over. And she's, she's, you know, she's that office. If I'm not there, she runs the office. She does everything in there. She answers the calls. So the 1666 that we're asking today, that the other offices are starting out at, I think that's warranted for the job description that goes into all you guys. And I don't think it's something that would nip our budget to where we couldn't still function. So my request is to you guys again is to please consider giving Gloria's position. Because, you know, we've heard discussion that it's not just about Gloria. That's correct. If she does retire, we want, we want a nice salary for other employees that come in and we want it to be an attractive salary for that position. So I'm asking for consideration of that.
I will stand corrected. Last year that you had a tax rate was 2008.
Thank you. That's my request for you guys is to please consider getting my office staff to the starting salary that other employees at the courthouse are receiving, hiring them.
Very good. Anything else, Dan? Is there anybody who'd like to make any motion on the ATC?
We've already voted on it.
You voted on it previously, ever. You have the opportunity to do it today if you wish, so.
Thanks, Cameron.
I'd just like to say that I did read the job description and I am agreeing with Cameron. I mean, I just think her salary is too low. So let's just, I'll make the motion to bump it up.
I'll start.
I feel that way.
A motion in a second to. A motion in a second to increase the... We have a motion in a second to increase the salary. So, what is your motion?
My motion is to get her up where the other offices...
Okay, that's a, that's a salary ordinance motion. That's not a budget motion.
So, my motion is to raise her pay, I mean, to the 1660.
Well, then, we would have to bump the line.
We don't have to, we can.
You're telling me what you, I mean, you have to have a rate. All right, let me pull, I, let me pull it out. Last time I made, you said 1660.
Yeah, Liz.
It was either 1558 or it was 1660. She's going to get 1550, remind, right now, I believe.
Okay, then it was the 1660.
Yeah.
Well, is this not the same problem, so to speak, and change in the budget in the last half an hour that we can take care of? I know we talked about additional to start the year, but it looks to me like it ain't this way to, to additional first of the year to take care of.
I would be dead set against additionals to start the year.
I, I agree. But, I mean, there's two issues here. You have a salary ordinance issue, and you have a budgetary issue. I mean, you can change the salary ordinance without changing the budget. That is possible. We did it last year. So, the two issues, and that's why I was saying, that the two issues you're gonna be playing. We don't have to adopt our salary ordinance until the end of the year. We have to adopt it after the end of the year. And...
That is correct. That's what I was going to say. The salary ordinance can be changed by the end of the year.
Right, and so, we have, we have a $10 million, $10 million plus appropriations that we got to get through here today. And we're talking about $2,000 changes. That's really, this, in my opinion, is not the, that's why we would make those...
So, if we don't do the budget change today, you're saying that we can change our salary ordinance or and get it to by the first of January?
The salary ordinance can be changed at any time.
You have $6,000 in capital that could be transferred and not doing it. Like, I'm looking at their...
Okay, so, motions put on?
Yes.
Anybody else on the back row?
Morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to thank you all for your... Giving the raise in the state. I really appreciate it. My deputy appreciates it. I did just have one question. Part-time salaries. Did you send in the, in the...
It's not been decided. That's part of the salary.
Okay, okay. Because I just wondered what the, I know last year it was like 1045 to 12...
I think that in, it was $11 to $13. But it wasn't for every...
Right.
Everyone.
Correct.
It's just, I would assume...
Most of them are $11 to $13, but there are...
Certain ones that, I could say for everyone.
Okay, okay.
But, I mean, the main offices were that.
Okay. Well, that was, that was just a little sketchy on that one. It came out in our month and memo, so... But, thank you all for your hard work.
Good morning. My staff definitely can appreciate the pay raises. My only concern is you cut my $1,000 meeting allowance. And I'm required by state call to attend 15 hours of training. So, by you cutting that, I believe this year, all but $100 and some dollars was used of the $1,000 for training.
I believe you can use the, on the election, or county elective official training fund for a lot of your meetings. There's, is that...
Yeah, she can. Everything? I mean...
Any state called meeting?
Yes. Okay, so what about the ones that aren't state called, that I've been attending?
What wouldn't be?
The AIC meetings?
The annual conference is not, part of it can be paid out of the elected official training fund because of the workshops that you get credit for.
Right.
So, part of it can, like, part of it can be paid for. And we are working on trying to get the whole conference.
I, yeah, they left, they left my election... Some of my other expenses.
Because that can't come out of that. There's only certain policies that can come out of that.
Well, I've got certain, yeah, I've got two meetings a year that can come out of that election meeting budget line. Yes. But I have a total of... Six meetings that I attend a year, that I will be attending a year. So, I just wanted to make sure that those were covered. I mean, if they're covered under another fund that's never been utilized by my office.
And they've expanded that a lot in the last year, the elective official training fund.
Okay.
And that's why we're really trying, that fund is accumulating, because not enough people are using it, so trying to...
Yeah, well, I would say, I don't believe any of my two predecessors used that amount, because it's...
I don't think they could.
Okay.
Before, it was just for the elected officials. It's now for the elected officials and deputies. The statute was changed.
Okay. My only other concern about that line item on... Cork dues. And I think I will be okay, but it's going to, maybe, I might have to come back and ask for some because it's based on my pay that you increased. So, I just want to make sure, you know, I mean, I, I think it's within $12 if I've done the calculations correct. Okay, so I just want to make sure that you'll know that if it's not enough, that I'll be...
I think we're all going to be in that same boat.
Okay. I mean, I appreciate the raise, but it kind of messed up a couple of other line items. So, yeah, as long as I'm able to attend these trainings, that's the main thing. I mean, I owe it to the citizens to have as much training as I can get. And I bring back a lot of information to my staff. And it's sometimes overwhelming how much I bring back to them. I'm actually starting a new thing where we're closing. We're opening it a half an hour later on one day a month. And we're going over all the training material that I'm bringing back. Otherwise, there's not enough minutes in the day to go over what we're learning. So, okay, so if it's still in there, I'm, if Beth, will you give me that? So I know what I'm looking at?
What, what?
The meeting, the meeting allotment money that I'm supposed to be...
Well, they haven't appropriated it yet.
Well, once that's done, will you let me know what fund that is?
Sure, yes.
And who is my council rep? I've never been contacted.
Sure. We need to talk to Sharon. I don't have my list here, I'm sorry.
If you would just get back to me. Okay. All right, thank you.
Anybody else from the back row? Is there any motion? Any, please, please, ma'am.
No, I just want to thank you guys for the hard work this year. And we do appreciate the raises. Those are like, you know, we do appreciate your, your bad act of time, so, thank you.
Anybody else?
Nope, I don't have any.
Anything else from the council? From the public? All right. I would entertain, entertain a motion to, wait, do we adjourn this meeting? And then, okay, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn the...
I would like to just to say, the salary ordinance, I'm going to have people asking me about their part-time. I mean, I already have, and I've tried to explain it, but evidently I didn't do a very good job. But, like, on the election, I have written down $11. There's certain ones that are, did not change. So, if we could work on that early, not as late as December, that would be great.
Oh, I did have just one question. When do you want me to bring my sworn statements? And when do you want to have the ordinance prepared by your attorney so we can sign all that?
November would be great.
Okay.
We did it in December last year, but...
Okay. All righty. Thank you.
You've been great to me.
So, was there a motion to adjourn by Paul Reiter? Second by Scott Ayers? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Pose, same side? So, we will have a 10 o'clock budget adoption, leaving in the 10:10, council.